I'm going to call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome everybody to the December 12, 2022 regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake City School Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Vice Code. Mr. Charnella, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Eady.
Here.
Mr. Roskis.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Here.
Mrs. Menzer.
Here.
Mrs. Baer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Could you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, welcome to this meeting. Is this working? Okay. To ensure all are aware of the way these meetings operate, we want to share the following. One, prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. Board members have had the opportunity to call the superintendent and treasurer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. Board members are not permitted, per Ohio Meetings Act and Sunshine laws, to conduct conversations regarding board business outside of a public meeting. Tonight will be the first time in which we, as a board, can conduct, as a whole, conversations related to all items on the agenda. This meeting's agenda is always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to the board meeting. Community members can always email the board with questions or come and participate in the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. To participate in public comments, participants should sign up before the meeting. When signing up, you are provided a copy of our public participation policy. Participants are asked to abide by those requirements. As the meeting progresses, you will see the board discuss items and not vote. Those items are marked with an asterisk in the agenda. These items are a part of our consent calendar. To ensure our meetings move along, we vote to approve all of these items at the end of the meeting. Other items, without an asterisk, are voted on individually for a variety of reasons, which are also outlined in our policies. Lastly, the way in which we conduct our meetings is outlined in those policies. You can find these on the Board of Education tab on the district's website. We will now move on to our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve item 2A, approval of agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 2A.
Thank you, Ms. Schatzman. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Menzer. So, this evening, we do have a presentation under 8A, our Practical Nursing Program. And what I would like to do is make a motion to amend our agenda, to move our presentation from our Practical Nursing Program to be our new item 3A. This way, they can present, and we can all enjoy, and those who participate would be able to leave thereafter if they chose to do so. So, do I hear a motion to approve the suggested amendment to the agenda?
Madam President, I move to...to do that. I motion to do that, to move that agenda from 8A to 3A.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion about that change?
Is that before or after public comment?
It'll be right after this approval of agenda, so it can occur first, as we have some students here this evening.
Gotcha.
That's why I figured. They have homework, might want to go home and chill. So. Any other questions? Mr. Charnella?
Mr. Eady.
Yes.
Mr. Roskis.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baer.
Yes.
The agenda is amended.
Okay. Now, do I hear a motion to approve our agenda, amended agenda as is, with our new item 3A?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as it has been amended.
Thank you. Ms. Roskis, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second the motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Schatzman. Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Charnella?
Mr. Roskis.
Yes.
Mrs. Baer.
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mr. Eady.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We will now move on to our new item 3A, Superintendent Report, Practical Nursing Program.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, Lori Klinowski, who is the Director of Adult and Career Tech Programming, is here to share information about the Practical Nursing Program, which is housed at NCI Eastlake. This program and several others at NCI help us to not only prepare students for meaningful employment when they leave Willoughby Eastlake, but they also help us to fill a void in healthcare. And I had the opportunity to see some of Lori's students in action at Breckenridge at the beginning of the year, and I was so impressed with the work that they were doing and how they interacted with their patients. I just felt that the community needed to know a little bit more about this great program. So, that's when I asked Lori to present. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Okay. Well, thank you. My name is Lori Klinowski, and I am...I have been with Willoughby Eastlake Schools for over 25 years, with both the Practical Nursing Program and now all of our other career technical programs that we've brought on over the past several years. So, bear with me, please. Over 60 years ago, Lake County was growing by leaps and bounds, and as the community began to grow, there was a need for nursing in Lake County. And at the time, Lake County General Hospital, which became Lake Health Systems and now University Hospital Systems, reached out to Willoughby Eastlake City Schools and asked to partner with them to begin a Practical Nursing Program. And in 1962, 60 years ago, we opened our doors. We were located at the time in the barns at the board office, and we started an adult program. And then several years later, we transitioned to a high school program along with the adult program. And I just wanted to just share one little bit of information. Career Technical Education became mandated by the government, the federal government, 10 years later. So, we were way above the curve in 1962. And so, I'm really proud to be part of this program and part of the educational offerings and the work that we do. It's meaningful work for our community. So, there's our solution, and that is Lake County Memorial Hospital back in the day. So, today, I just wanted to talk about a few of the program offerings that we have for both adult and high school. Our focus at the NCI campus in Eastlake is healthcare. Our trades in cosmetology and business are in Willoughby, and hopefully, I'll be invited back to talk about those programs in the near future. But at the Eastlake campus, again, the focus is medical. We have adult medical billing and coding, medical assisting, LPN, and we are hoping that within the year, we will have a bridge LPN to RN program. And then, for our high school kids, we have a pre-nursing program, which is an allied health program, along with LPN and medical assisting. One of the things that I always like to share is that our adult programming is self-funded through tuition. And so, we're, in a way, a school inside of a school. We have aligned academic standards, and we are regulated by a whole bunch of folks, so it's not just the Ohio Department of Ed who looks at our curriculum. We have our...we are funded partially through the United States Department of Ed because our students are often...adult students are often eligible for Title IV funding, which are Pell Grants and student loans. And then, we are also governed by the Ohio Board of Nursing, who looks at our practice and assure...we have to assure that we are using evidence-based practice for our curriculum. Our technical skills are relevant and needed and practiced, and we meet with a board, an advisory board, at least twice a year. They come to our buildings, they look at our equipment, and they maintain and make sure that what we are teaching is going to transition to the world of work. The curriculum and instruction is high quality. As I said earlier, it is rigorous and evidence-based, and students in every one of our programs must pass a credentialing exam to work. And I am proud to say that our LPN program, within six months of graduation, is about a 96% pass rate. Our medical billing and coding program has been 100% since the program was initiated, along with our medical assisting programs. As we said, we prepare for education and careers, and we were really fortunate to have Mr. Murphy come out. Just kind of on a side note, our high school LPN students gave the COVID vaccine booster and the flu vaccine to every resident at Ohio Living, Breckenridge Village. And our high school LPN and adult LPN students also participated in the mass vaccination clinics. So, we were responsible for assisting the Ohio Department of Health, and we gave more than 10,000 vaccines. So, great experience all the way around. We offer much student support. Besides the academic tutoring and those types of things, we have a lot of technical support. Students are able to come and practice in open laboratories. We get...we have a financial aid advisor for financial support. We help students with funding opportunities and try to help them secure funds when they may not be eligible for traditional funds. We also provide healthcare services through federal grants for our students, including mental health services, and we have people coming into our building, offering those for our student population. And then, we also offer social service concepts because we know students can't be successful in school if there are issues at home. We have a variety of industry partners. We have students at the Cleveland Clinic, University Hospital Systems, the VA, Ohio Living, and on and on. We have an advisory board that Mr. Murphy did attend a few weeks ago, where we have often about 20 clinical partners at the table, letting us know if we're really doing a good job preparing people for work. And then, last but not least, I wanted to highlight my adult medical billing and coding program. Right now, there is a great need for medical billers and coders, and sometimes I think some of our adult programs, they don't...people don't know too much about them. So, I'd like to take the opportunity to invite Gloria Germano. She is my medical billing and coding instructor. Sherrell Foster, she is a community member. Her children attend Longfellow Elementary School, and she is a current student. And Tiffany Richardson, she graduated from our program last year and is currently a medical biller and coder at University Hospital. And I thought that maybe they would like to come up and just say a few words about their experience in our programs. So...
Sherrell, you want to go?
Sherrell is already in it.
Good evening. I would like to say that I really appreciate this program. It's been changing my life for the better. And when I say they give you the tools to be successful, whether it's at home, whether it's food, whether it's clothes, or kids, it's the best program I ever been to. Like, they don't let you fail. Failure is not an option, especially with my teacher. She...failing is not an option. I would like to say that I'm ready for my life to change. Like, I couldn't go to college. College wasn't an option for me because I had children early, so I didn't really know what path I wanted to go down, what road. So, me being in this program is giving me...is setting me up for success, and I really appreciate that. What else I want to say? I'm sorry. I talk a lot.
This is your moment. Take it.
I'm just...I really just appreciate the program. Like, I changed my whole life around to be in this program. I moved out, and I came, and I moved with my dad. I appreciate him for that. I left everything in the past behind me to be successful.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Richardson. I graduated from the Medical Billing and Coding Program at NCI this past June. This program has impacted me in so many ways because my original plan was to become a nurse. And unfortunately, my program closed, my school closed, before I could complete my last semester, and I had no idea what I was going to do because I wasn't able to transfer my credits. So, essentially, I researched because someone suggested that I pursue billing and coding. And I came to NCI, and from the moment I stepped foot into the door, they were very supportive. They were very invested in us succeeding and learning what we needed to and taking those tools and going out into the world and utilizing them. Since then, I was hired on at university in the corporate pre-sert radiology department as a pre-sert specialist. And, I mean, it's been terrific. Thanks to Ms. Klinowski and Ms. Germano, I mean, they have been wonderful. They've been amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting us showcase our programs. And I just wanted to leave with just one thought for all of you. And I am grateful for the support that this community show...just helps with career technical education. A few years ago, in the state of Ohio, 118,000 seniors graduated high school. Of those 118,000, 47,000 of those kids went to college. Only 18,000 of those 47,000 graduated college. So, the question becomes, where are those 101,000 kids, and what are they doing? Hopefully, they'll come to programs like ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, absolutely. I was going to say, floor is open for questions.
I was wondering about demand for the program. Are we turning people away, either at the adult or high school level who are interested in the program, and we just have too much interest?
Let me start with the high school program. Because we are part of a consortium, the way those programs work are the students apply for two programs within the consortium, and then, we go through a process of looking to see what their first choice is and second choice, and try to fit as many kids that want a career program into one of their first two choices. There are times that we turn kids away. Let me give you an example. I heard that 60 kids from Solon are trying to get into our LPN program. So, we will eventually have to turn kids away, and we hate to do that, but we hope that they'll maybe try the pre-nursing pathway or the medical assisting pathway. And we always sit at the table and talk about what other programs can we start to make sure that we could get these kids some type of career training. For the adult program, we bring in about 150 LPN students a year. We often, with each cohort, have about 50 to 70 applicants. So, we do...we try not to turn people away, but what we try to do is move them to the next cohort starting. And we could grow that program by leaps and bounds, but right now, staffing is really tight. Nursing, a lot of people are leaving that profession for a whole bunch of reasons. So, it's not always easy to find staff that want to go into education.
Thank you.
Of the students that are successfully graduating from the program, do you know how many of them, like, average? Is it a large portion? Are they staying in the community in northeastern Ohio? Are they moving outside of the community and working there?
Well, if you would have asked me that before COVID, I would have said they're staying in the community. Right now, particularly in healthcare, there's a lot of incentives to travel. And there's...so, we are seeing students leaving the program and doing travel, for example, a travel nursing job, and then they find themselves in California, and they love California, and they stay. All of the nursing boards currently are moving to multi-state licenses because of that reason. The state of Ohio is working to transition to multi-state licensure within the next few months. So, we do see some of that. But most of our adult students are rooted in the community, so they tend to come home. And then, our high school kids, almost all of them tend to leave our program and do something else at the college level. It's usually a healthcare-related program. And so, hopefully, they too, since they're rooted in Lake County, come back to Lake County and work. There's more jobs than we have people to fill them.
Okay. I just had a quick question.
Sure.
And I just want to ensure that I understand, and as well as the community can understand, when you say consortium, when you say that Solon kids want to take some of the spots, why would we give some of our positions to students outside of the district?
So, we are part of a career tech consortium. So, we partner with 11 high schools to provide career technical education. And the reason that you see communities doing that is because they simply may not be able to fill a program on their own. And so, the Ohio Department of Ed encourages these consortiums. And so, what that might mean for a Willoughby Eastlake student is we might have a Willoughby Eastlake student interested in culinary arts, and we don't offer culinary arts in our district. So, they can, through the consortium, take culinary arts at Beachwood High School. Just as the student at Beachwood High School, they don't offer a nurse...a practical nursing program, or a welding program, or an auto program, those kids could come to Willoughby Eastlake and take those programs. So, how the process works is students are...we...the consortium lead school, which is Mayfield, they go to all the high schools, and they do presentations to the 10th graders and talk about all the career technical options at all of the schools. Then, the students attend opportunity night with their parents, which, by the way, happened last...just a few days ago. And they were able to go talk to students and teachers about all of the different programs. And then, tomorrow, at least in Willoughby Eastlake, we have open house. So, now the kids from the districts can come in, and they could go to the different schools, and they can view the programs. They are applying for programs right now, and by the time January ends, we should know who wants to go to what program. Now, the reason that...so, that's why we're sharing kids. We do look at the program by the seats available. So, and again, an example, our medical assisting program can house 24 students. So, then, we look at all of the schools, and we look at their enrollment. So, Willoughby Eastlake is the largest school in the consortium, so more seats are earmarked for Willoughby Eastlake kids. West G is a smaller school. Less schools would be...they would have less seats available. So, it...we try to fairly do that. And then, if the program...if there...if, for example, West G has two seats and no one wants to come, then we can take any one that we want to fill those seats. And we, of course, always are looking at our North and South kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a question I received often in the community, so.
Good.
Okay. I did have one more question.
Sure.
And please correct me if I'm wrong. When we did our tours a few months ago, one of the things that really surprised me that I didn't know, as a community member and a parent in the district, was that we have a clinic at NCI Eastlake. Can you tell us a little bit about that clinic and the services that it offers?
So, we do have an occupational health clinic. It is at NCI Eastlake. It is run by University Hospital Lake Health. We are open one, kind of late afternoon, and two days a week. Mondays from 2:00 to 6:00. Wednesdays, we are open from 9:00 to 5:00. Fridays, we are open from 8:00 to 4:00. And any employee within our district, even if they're a substitute employee, can use the clinic. It is for acute care. There is a nurse practitioner who provides care, and it is...and so, she can write prescriptions. But it is open for walk-in at any time, or you can call ahead and get some advice. And she can either treat your problem for no copay. If you get a prescription, or if they have to do a diagnostic, they will run that through your insurance. But if you just walk in, you have a sore throat, and you walk out with a strep culture and a prescription, there is no cost to you until you get to the pharmacy. And then, she always follows up. And we have about 260 or 260... Um, and then she always follows up and um, we have about 260 or 270 team members currently that use our clinic um, faithfully, but we need more people using that clinic. So, thank you for asking, cuz I'd like to get that word out. Um, our nurse practitioner is top-notch.
Thank you. And then just to clarify, it's for employees of the district?
Employees um, and their immediate family and our school board members.
Okay. Oh, that's a dangerous offer.
And our bus drivers, all of them, all of us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Do applicants to the adult program need to live in Willoughby Eastlake School District?
No, they do not.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And wanted to extend a thank you to Tiffany and Sherelle for coming and speaking and sharing your story this evening. We truly appreciate you and we wish you both well in your future progress.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ah, that was exciting. That was a good presentation. Okay. We will now move on to our new item 4A, Community Engagement Board President Q and A. So, last month, we had four speakers. Uh, Ms. Nancy Nack actually just spoke to thank the community about the levy, so no response needed there. And um, Mrs. Mara spoke about the appreciative nature of the nurses' notes and immunization and just kinda speaking to information to share with the community. There really weren't questions, it was more of statements and sharing. And then Mr. Mara spoke about transgender students and the way the district is kinda handling it and providing a, a statement of how he felt and wanted to share that as well as, excuse me, made a request for social emotional learning, if it's in the curriculum, to be pulled out. And uh, that was more of a request than a question. At this point in time, our social emotional learning is not embedded in our curriculum. It's kinda the foundation for our PBIS, which is our Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports, which each school has to uh, work with students to build a positive culture as a student body. And we currently do not, and Mr. Murphy, correct me, we've spoken about this in the past, we currently do not use SEL as the foundation in any curriculum.
Correct.
We also had uh, Ms. McWigan, who had asked a few questions about mental health. And we had a presentation on mental health later in the meeting in which we asked questions about the staffing from Crossroads and its support at a few of our different schools, Edison, Grant, and Soy. We did address those questions. Ms. McWigan had a few additional questions. And I've spoken with Ms. McWigan, we're still working through additional conversations and uh, some additional questions that she has. There's nothing to respond to at this time. Um, and that was everybody from our public participation session last month. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item 4B, Public Comment. Mr. Tarnello?
Mia Matos.
And then just a reminder to those participating this evening, you have three minutes. The timer is up for your viewing and we ask that you state your name and your address before beginning.
My name is Mia Matos. I am a student at Willoughby Middle and I live at 4876 Waldemar Avenue in Willoughby. I've come here to address the, an issue regarding the quarterly incentives at Willoughby Middle. We have an award system called shout-outs. In order to earn a shout-out, you must have above-the-line behavior. If you earn the required number of shout-outs for each quarter, you get to attend the incentive at the end of the quarter. The problem I bring to your attention is that the shout-out system is not awarded consistently. Therefore, I'm asking to do away with the quarterly incentives and go back to regular holiday parties where all students can participate. For example, students who aren't bad or don't cause trouble often do not earn enough shout-outs to attend. They may not act, actively participate in answering questions but have passing grades and are quiet and respectful in class. I personally have been affected by this lack of consistency in awarding shout-outs. For example, last year, there were several kids who were always in detention but still ended up going to the winter dance. However, I could not attend because I didn't have enough shout-outs. I've never had a detention, I stay out of trouble and have decent grades, just like many of my classmates. While I understand that incentives are meant to try and encourage better behavior, the current incentive system is not working, as many good kids are missing out when they shouldn't be. All students need a break to have some fun where we can play games, watch a movie and have treats. We need more things for everyone to look forward to in our school now that the WMS PTO has restarted. The PTO could work with the school to get parent volunteers to organize these parties. I respectfully ask that you reconsider the incentive system so that all students have an opportunity to participate in these special events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Mara, 39, Miniwawa Drive, Timberlake, Ohio. That was very brave of you. That was very good. I really wish she was still here. Nice job. We need to hear from the students. Tell your friends. Um, I understand the Suzacool, the musical, was a big hit. And well done by North. Congratulations. I'm a English major, British literature, Victorian literature I love. There's different renditions, of course, of um, Charles Dickens Scrooge. I received a call from an elderly woman in my neighborhood who said it was a girl that was Christmas past. Well, not all playwrights have the same gender of the three ghosts. I said, well, well, what's wrong with that? She said, but it was a boy. I said, you're telling me the Christmas past ghost was a girl character, but they chose a boy? She said, yes, he had a tutu on. I guess it was a senior night. It was a senior night where the seniors went to go see the, the play. And he had beautiful makeup on, she said, a beautiful tutu, but it was definitely a boy. Therefore, I further looked into it, called a couple of parents that I knew. I guess Longfellow went to this, there were some kids from Longfellow that had a field trip. This parent told me that their child said, we knew it was a boy cuz it had hairy legs, sparkly tights, spiky high heels, but the character was a girl. I said, here we go again. The parent further told me they had to sign a permission slip to go to this play. In my opinion, since they decided to have a girl ghost of Christmas past, which is perfectly acceptable, but they gave it to a boy with a very much of boy physique. Parents beware, this is grooming. This is grooming of our children to accept something that is directly in front of you. This girl told her mother it was a boy voice and the rest of the people in the row were laughing. They shouldn't have been laughing, but I wonder what Charles Dickens would have thought with his play? If they wanted a girl ghost for, a girl ghost of Christmas past, but yet distinctly chose a boy? I'm, I'm not understand why these decisions are made. At one time, if you wanna think about Shakespearean plays, women weren't allowed to act. Women have come a long way. We're allowed to act in any capacity or role. They used to choose boys because women weren't allowed. This is another reason inclusivity has gone crazy. You went so far to accept a boy for a girl role, you took out the girl's ability again to, to get the role of the, of the ghost and homecoming queen, all in two months. Parents, start watching. Thank you.
Tony Syracusea, 34303 Iris Lane, Eastlake. Um, first of all, I'd like to apologize to the board for the last time that I spoke here. Um, I asked for all of you to resign. And uh, as upset as I was about the incident that happened, that was disrespectful of me and I apologize for that. I can't do what you do. Public speaking right now, even though I've come here and talked to you many times, I am terrified right now. I can't do what you do and any type of uh, you know, anything going on, you'd probably throw me off the board. So, I apologize for that. Be that as it may, I will still call out things when I think they need to be said. Uh, number one, um, I asked the last time that I was here about the amount that this board has spent in legal fees uh, since January, not just about the Boxler incident. I know you addressed it at the last meeting, but you only mentioned about that incident. Number two, um, our treasurer might be the best treasurer in the state of Ohio, but with cuts that we're always having to make here, Willoughby Eastlake and that, um, I think a 47% raise on just a verbal evaluation one year ahead of time just wasn't right. That's my opinion, but I just don't think it's right. Uh, number three, once again, just my opinion, the, I know you guys are talking about the next levies and what to do with them. I really think that you need to make this a replacement permanent levy. We need to stop kicking the can down the road. We need to fix this and fix it today. And last but not least, I just wanna give a big shout-out thank you to the levy committee for what they did. They, they just did an incredible job with absolutely nothing. So, I wanted to thank them. That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will now move on. Oh, excuse me. It's one of those nights. Move on to item 5A, President Pro Temp, Appointment of President Pro Temp. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5A?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 5A.
Thank you, Ms. Schatzman. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Oskas. The floor is open. Kinda wanted to explain and discuss this one out, but I first wanted to um, throw out, does anybody else wanna explain it? Do you have questions?
My understanding is that this is the president who would lead our January organizational meeting.
Yes, until we were to vote on who the president would be for next year. So, essentially, they open, they roll call, they pledge, and then we go straight into nominations.
Great.
Pretty easy. Erin, any questions?
No.
Pretty simplistic. So, with that being said, we do have to determine who that person would be this evening so that when we vote on the resolution, that person's name is put in there. Correct, Mr. Tarnello?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, I know traditionally, it's usually whomever the president was before becomes the president pro temp for the next meeting uh, to kinda open it. So, is that the way we wanna go or would we like somebody else to take on that?
So, do we like nom, do nominations or, oh, okay.
Yeah, kinda, yeah, kinda, just kind of explaining it out, just making sure.
Gotcha. I was gonna nominate someone. I don't know if that's like taboo then based on?
No, they can, you can go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna nominate Stacy cuz I, we've been working on policy together. I thought she knew the policies really well, so I thought it was sort of in line, so I was gonna nominate Mrs. Menzer. I think I should call her.
And then just to clarify, this person would open the meeting, but we'd still have to do additional nominations for the next president?
Gotcha.
Okay. And also, just wanna make sure the community is aware as well. So, uh, so the pro temp is just somebody who kind of opens, for example, I went to the Willowick City Council meeting. They had taught for the city council also appoint who their pro temp is for their next meeting in the month of January. They're just the person that opens it to get the floor open for conversation so that you can then enter into nominations for the next president of the board. So, okay. I saw some question faces, I wanted to make sure I addressed them. Okay, so with a, a first, do I have a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So, we would be voting on the President Pro Temp, Appointment of President Pro Temp to be Ms. Stacy Menzer. Okay? So, Mr. Tarnello?
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
The President Pro Temp is Mrs. Menzer?
Okay. And then she would pick up next month?
At the organizational meeting.
Just making sure. Okay, moving on to item 6A, Board Discussion, Levy Discussion. Do I hear a motion to approve item, well, we don't have to approve it, it's for discussion. I just get in a groove, like, I just want some nomin, you know, motions. So, levy discussion, I know at our last meeting, we were kind of like, hey, we need to talk about this again and um, the floor is open, so where do we wanna start?
Maybe with Mr. Tarnello's recommendation?
Right as he takes a drink of water.
I'm gonna go to the podium.
I'd just like to hear that first before we open our discussion.
We've got to figure that out.
We're gonna figure it out.
Let's get stand-up desks.
Whatever that just was, if you have found a solution, let's talk about it.
You want me to scrooge that way, right?
You scrooge that way, she scrooge that way.
That's right, because we're missing a chair.
All right, these were uh, some of the options that we discussed last month. And now I do have the Excel spreadsheet, so we can review kind of what we were looking at. So, by doing no changes, clearly that is no changes. So, if you do the 10-year combination emergency levy, that would eliminate this, this one, this one, and this one. So, these four ballot issues would be removed. So, it would look like this. And that would be because they're combined and also, since it would go from a five-year renewal to a 10-year renewal, you would eliminate these two. So, you, you would eliminate four ballot issues in the next year, in the next 10-year period. And in odd years, you do pay ballot fees. So, for example, in 2023, we would pay $20,000 to be on the ballot. So, that's 20,000 here, there's an odd year here, and there's an odd year here. So, that's $60,000 in ballot fees plus $10,000 of ballot and legal fees. That's a $100,000 savings right there, just by making that one change. And the levy cycle looks a little bit better. Now, I understand it's not permanent, however, it is a step in the right direction because you are able to go from all of these ballot issues to just these five that pop up every 10 years, unless you wanna keep combining or educating and making a substitute down the road. Now, your other options are substitute combination 10-year, that would have the same effect on the levy cycle, however, it would be a substitute. And the benefit to a substitute is it would uh, capture new construction. So, you would generate new taxes on new construction versus now, new construction just pushes down everyone's taxes because the school doesn't receive additional funding cuz it's a fixed dollar amount levy. On a substitute combination levy, it would be permanent. So, it would be completely off the cycle, so it would be like this and they would all be gone. That's, so that's what the substitute permanent would do. Now, the concern with the substitute combination is uh, it does not read like a renewal levy. And something that we did not talk about last meeting, but there was a change to the upcoming ballot language going forward on House Bill 140, where previously levies would read as cents per $100 evaluation. So, for example, last levy was 24.4 cents per 100, per $100 evaluation. Now, to get that total, it would be 24.4 cents times 1,000 times 35%, and you would get $85.40. So, unless you know that calculation, you're probably not going to know how to get to Or you go 2.44 mils times $35 per $100,000 evaluation and you get $85.40. However, that levy also received the homes that enroll back credit, which is a 12.5% reduction, so the true cost was $73.74. Now, what the new levy ballot, ballot language, I should say, what the new ballot language will read is it will be will read is it will be $85.40 per $100,000 evaluation. So it will not factor in any homestead and rollback credit. So it will not represent the true cost of the levy. So it would be 12.5% higher than it actually is. However, I believe state legislators are trying to get rid of the complicated math problem I started off with, which is 24.4 cents times $1,000 times 35%.
Am I correct that they, that it also doesn't take the 35% in because it's appraised value now instead of taxable value? So it's?
It would still factor in the 35%.
Okay.
So it just wouldn't factor in the homestead rollback, which is the 12.5%. So it, seeing 24.4 cents is a lot different than seeing $85.40. So that would involve some education on, hey, it's just changing the language. It's, it doesn't mean it costs more money. So I want everyone to be mindful of that as well because that is a change no matter what you do. Even if you do no changes, it's still going to be a change to what people are going to see in May. And, okay, I'll start off with what's my recommendation? I believe because of all the changes and also what some of the other local entities are doing in terms of potential new money issues or increases in taxes, I'd recommend the emergency combination 10-year, which is the second option. I believe it does make a meaningful impact on the, on the cycle by getting rid of the ones in yellow, save the district $100,000 in ballot and lawyer fees. And that's a lot of, that's a lot of levies. I think since I've been here, we've only been off the ballot maybe one time. I feel like, and that was maybe one May. So that's a lot, maybe what, seven levies, or it'll end up being like seven levies in like four years or something. So that's, it's just a lot of renewals. It's like, I feel like this would be a step in the right direction.
Do you know how the sex annual tax update that's upcoming would affect?
I think that's still two years away.
Is it two?
Because the trying to update was last year.
Okay.
And so I don't have the data, you know?
That's okay. I thought it was this upcoming year, 2023.
I mean, housing prices are falling currently. So, you know, one good year, maybe two cold off years, it might be flat, but you know, you have to really see what that data looks like.
So last time I was the one pushing for the continuous, you know, non-10-year, so the substitute com, which one was it? Would you call it substitute combo continuous? I wanted to be in line with your document. Which I still absolutely, as someone who was formerly on the levy committee and has had a lot of experience with people who were volunteering and looking, we certainly need a permanent, long-term solution. I did not get the sense that everyone was in line with me last time on that. Given that information, as well as the information that we talked about again today on House Bill 140 that changed the language, I think there's a lot of education that needs to be done to achieve that. There'll be a lot of ballot language plus a lot of, there'll be even more changes with the ballot language and then education about why continuous. I'm worried that that will be a large uphill battle to climb. So given that, if I'm faced with these options, I think that going for the renewal, the 10-year renewal, as Mr. Tarnello suggested, is where I'm landing tonight.
What's everybody else's thoughts? Because we have to make a decision this evening so that Mr. Tarnello can work with the attorneys to draft the resolution for our two meetings in January. So we have to decide this evening.
I'm still in the same spot where I was last month with the emergency combo 10-year. It'd be the second option.
So we agree then?
Right.
I'm correct? Okay.
And then the substitute combo 10-year, that one was to capture the new construction growth. So if we go with the emergency combo 10-year, we will not capture that. And then for the substitute combo 10-year, is it frozen? So once that one's passed, it's based on then recalculated with the then existing new construction. It doesn't readjust in the future when new homes are built, right? So like we have a new development in Eastlake that just got, right? So that would, all those properties that are real constructed and owned would be subject for us for collection. Let's say next year, there's an additional development somewhere, we would not be getting those funds. It's frozen at that dollar amount for the then recalculated new construction that wasn't in the original levies.
I don't think so.
I'm trying to.
I'm sorry. It just occurred to me. I would have asked this before.
So basically, I'm gonna explain it a different way. Let me know if we're talking the same language.
Okay.
If I build a house and it's the same house as you, and we're next to each other, and you pay $3,000 a year in taxes, now I will pay $3,000 a year in taxes. That's with the substitute. With the emergency, you paid 3,000, but because I built the house, I pay 2,950, and now you pay 2,950. So everyone's taxes are coming down as a result of the tax duplicate increasing. So with the substitute, any new construction will just be added to the, what the levy will collect. So it will actually collect more going forward.
So why would we not want to take that one versus the emergency?
Education.
So that's all just, see, the ballot language would be?
It would not read like renewal. It would read like a substitute.
See, in my heart, that one seems to be a happy middle where we still give the community 10 years to temperature check, to determine if they want to continue to fund us or not based upon the decisions that we make, and at the same time, provide us with the tax revenue that's representative of the community that we serve. So, I mean, is that far off base, do you think?
I looked, and the additional taxes generated would be roughly $175,000.
Wow. For, I would say, from my work on the levy committee, a giant risk because the community is unfortunately used to renewals. You can talk about a renewal not being a new tax. I'm a little concerned about the education required. I certainly understand the benefit of the substitute, and especially because that's the only option where you can eventually go to continuous, and that's why I was pushing so hard. But I think if we're only, if we're not solving the time problem, the risk to reward for what he's talking about is very great.
And if we did the emergency combo 10-year, eventually could go to substitute, but we would have a lot more time to educate the community on the ballot language.
Correct. And I would hope that we would do that, and I know we'd have to talk about how much the district could do versus a levy committee if we're off cycle. I think that gives us maybe more flexibility, in my understanding, but.
We didn't have the luxury of having that conversation with legal.
Right, right.
And that was not a component of the conversations, was to get to the point, keep those hours low. So I think that'd be worth exploring, of course. Okay. Mr. Eadie?
With the House Bill 140 and the, these changes in the verbiage, educating on top of House Bill 140 and all that, I, I'm more behind the emergency combo than the substitute, personally.
Yeah, for 175,000 a year.
I don't think we should make it more confusing when we've struggled over the years to get passage as it is, and now as the community seems to be becoming more supportive and, you know, we're seeing these programs that, that we have in the school district. I think that the, I'm for the emergency one.
I think we, there do need to be future conversations about permanent, converting to permanent levies because we can't, our district can't be sustained. No district can, doesn't matter. So I wish, I really do wish that we were in a place where we could do that, but I think we're, we're poising ourselves through, or we will be poised to speak English, when we get our new superintendent in, and that individual has a large task ahead of them. And a quality superintendent will be able to take it and run with it, and we'll see, a lot will hinge on that person. Because we already have the great students and amazing staff. We just need a good spokesperson, not, sorry, Mr. Murphy, you're doing an amazing job, but...
That's why I'm quiet over here.
There's, there's like no way to talk about both without thinking like Chuck's not here.
And Nick, can you go back to that Excel again? So with those four there, we still have those other three that you know, or other four, that we could, we could always talk about in the future doing the other option.
Yeah.
Right.
To do, because the community does get burned out. And not only do they get burned out, it's, it costs us a lot of money to continuously have levies on the ballot.
And I'm sure the levy committee gets burned out constantly having to do these.
Well, I think.
I think the, the emergency combo 10-years is a step in the right direction, and I think over time, I mean ideally, in my mind, a continuous levy for the, all of them would be great, but I think that will take quite a bit of time to really move in that direction.
And Nick, when, with going with this combining like this, what is that amount gonna look like again? Instead of it being two?
So instead of close to 6 million and about seven and a half, it'd be 13.56 million.
Right, so we're still gonna have to contend with, with that and educating the community that this really is going to be the same issues that's already going to be on the ballot, but we're trying to make it one, so it's, we're still gonna have to do some educating on that.
Right.
I agree. Wish we could just wave a magic wand and focus all of our energies and efforts on developing even better curriculums and investing in our staff and programming, but we'll get there, right? Okay. So Mr. Tarnello, I think you have your answer. Or 100 years. More like 1,000.
So emergency combo 10-year?
Yes.
All right.
Well, hey, look at that!
Yes, we did have.
Okay. So I did want to acknowledge that we did have a community member who emailed us today. We all received an email, and we really wanted to thank that individual. They had sought information on social media to kind of temperature check on their own accord and provided some feedback today, and think they resonate with Mr. Syracuse where we really do need more permanent continuous levies. And I, I think we're all on that same page, but I think it is baby steps, so, awesome. Just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of our community in supporting our schools, and we truly do appreciate that. Any other comments?
Questions?
Moving on. So we'll now move on to board discussion. So what I had kind of slated for today, Ms. Schatzman, you had requested you had something you wanted to chit chat about, and also wanted to bring the board up to speed about a conversation that Ms. Schatzman and I had about the superintendent search, just to kind of bring the rest of the board up to speed and confer as we move forward. And just, I had one other thing about parental rights from an email from a parent I needed to kind of discuss and have a conversation. So Ms. Schatzman, take it away.
Okay, so I'll start with, I did send out just a link to some information, although we did not have any discussion prior to this for the community, about Senate Bill 178. So for those of you who maybe have been watching the news recently, we're in what is been referred to as the lame duck session of the legislature in Ohio. So there's a lot of people who are losing their seats in January. Therefore, there's a lot of action in both the Senate and the House right now in Ohio. One of the things is Senate Bill 178, which essentially would take away the Ohio Department of Education and restructure how education is overseen in Ohio. So that means that OD would be replaced with something called DEW, which is the Department of Education and Workforce, and that would be overseen by someone who's appointed by our governor. It would essentially strip the state school board of a majority of their power. They would still have a few functions in terms of, I believe it's teacher requirements and a couple of other things. This is a 2,000-page bill that moved through the Senate in under two weeks. It's now in the House and potentially will be voted on this week. This is a radical change to education. I can't say whether I think it's a good idea or not because I didn't have time to read 2,000 pages. I think that's the same for many other school boards in Ohio and citizens in Ohio. So I think it's very dangerous for something to move so quickly, and I would like us to consider as a school board formally kind of together agreeing to advocate, whether it's through one of us doing it as a legislative liaison, or whether we ask Mr. Tarnello to help us, but basically to lobby the House to say we need more time and to push this vote into the new year so that our school board and other school boards have time to really understand what the repercussions of something like this is. My biggest red flag is that education is supposed to be nonpartisan. That's why they don't put our affiliations up when, when they're voting. So to make a partisan decision about who's gonna lead this new department, I have a lot of worry. So that is my initial reservation. I withhold formal judgment, but I would like us to consider really pushing to lobby our legislature right now.
From that link that I saw that you sent and reading over it a little bit, it also looked like it was taking away some of the, the voice from the parents in the community, especially in a time when we're trying to improve the, the representation that the parents have. This is the complete counter, and this is taking it away from the parents almost essentially having any voice, and now you're talking about a couple people that the governor just, any governor just wants to put in that position. So I'm, I'm in agreement with you. We need to, I think that we should at least advocate to try to get this at least moved to, to January, at least as far as our stance.
So we had our senior night out on Wednesday, which was amazing. We'll get there. But one of the things that we, who were in attendance did is when it was dinner time, we sat down with the seniors who came and participated, and the table that I sat at was very prepared to have conversations, and I was engaged directly by a table of about 10 senior citizens from the Eastlake Senior Center Center. They were amazing. And they had directly asked me, what's your opinion of House Bill, you know, 178? I went, well, that's a light dinner conversation. And I asked them what their sentiments were. We had a good discussion at the end of it. Even they who identified as, some were conservative, some were more liberal, but they're like, universally, we feel that bureaucracy, bureaucracy should stay out of education, which was a term that was said to me, and that education should be left to educators, but there's a good natural check and balance in place, just like a board of education is. I mean, Mr. Tarnello and Mr. Murphy really, they're the subject matter experts, and we challenge and support one another equally the same. So I know that those seniors at that table were following this. They also felt that it needed to be reviewed more thoroughly and, and did almost ask as if I agreed and if we would advocate, oddly enough, we didn't even talk about that. So I do have concerns as well. I feel that educators should be at the table when discussing education and making decisions. So I would be okay with advocacy. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I feel the same way.
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Tarnello, what would the next steps be? This would be the first time that the board would be actively seeking to advocate and not join existing advocacy, unless you're aware of efforts that exist currently.
I've seen a call to action from the Ohio School Board Association on this very Senate Next steps would be to reach out to our House representatives and ask if they would push it into the General Assembly out of lame duck session. So that's the only thing we could really do is advocate to our House representatives.
Is, is there something we can sign through? I know I saw an OSB email. I think there might be a petition we could sign as a board. I can talk to you offline.
I would reach out to Sally Green. I would reach out to Sally Green. She would absolutely know. You could probably send her a quick email. You have her email now.
Yeah, if you guys are okay, if I research from that end and Mr. Charnello researches and...
You're not gonna hear me say no.
I'm fine for that.
I'm sure you could probably make a quick phone call too, to the number, and they could probably give you good direction. Okay?
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to the floor tonight for discussion. Okay. Anything else, any other questions, comments? Mr. Murphy, Mr. Trelawny, I wanna make sure you have a voice as well. You feel comfortable, Mr. Murphy? Of course you do, you're like, "Yes, please, come on." I just wanted to make sure that you were included, so, okay. So, we know that December 19th, we're doing our, or not doing, we will be conducting a conversation regarding our superintendent search. And at this point in time, I have been, as the board president, a lot of things come directly just to whomever wears that hat. And I've been keeping a folder of all of the communications from search firms or people who are applying and kinda just putting it in a folder. And one of the things that we as a board discussed when Ms. Schatzman was appointed was leveraging her experience with executive search and leadership and the alike. So I wanted to kinda ask and just confirm with the board tonight. I, I've already spoken with Ms. Schatzman. And she's very happy to kinda pick up that information, kinda wade through it a little bit. So on the 19th, we have some very specific information to discuss, not just kind of, so we can take action. So kinda researching what are the options available, the different types of search firms, as well as I was going to provide the names of the individuals who had expressed interest in wanting to be on the superintendent committee from the community and kind of giving that to her to get organized to lead us in that discussion. Wanted to make sure that everybody felt comfortable with that or to see if anybody else would like to join her in leading that conversation on next Monday. Sold to Ms. Schatzman.
I accept.
Thank you. So I will compile all of that and provide it to her so that once again, our conversation will start with, this is what we have, this is what we know, and then we can kinda make some decisions. Okay.
I did have one question regarding that as well. You know, a lot of times when we hear from community members, we hear from a very, very small number of community members. A question that I had is from you, Mr. Roskos, the, the committee that we have. I know that we had talked about wanting to get more community involvement in regards to the superintendent. Can you enlighten us on how things have gone with that since last month?
Well, I'd like to talk more about that at our meeting next Monday. But I, I wanted to review the, the policy we drafted for first reading to make sure that, that's what everybody is, everybody is, thinks that's structured the right way. And once we determine that, then I'd definitely like to get the, the reading, kind of the second reading, and then get that committee going and recruiting members, additional members. I think there was only maybe, maybe five members that were pretty active, four or five. So certainly, once we get that structure finalized, I think we, we definitely will be asking for additional members from the community that, that are interested in that.
Are, are you able to say, I know no names, but the number of applicants or interested people so far?
So, what, I was actually looking for that right before the meeting started. It's upwards of fifteen individuals. And a lot of them were those that applied for the board-appointed position. And afterwards, they were like, you know, "I would love to help in any way that I physically can. If there are any committees in the future, please let me know." So, you know, holding on to those individuals' information and providing them, you know, a call to action, "Hey, we have our community advisory committee. We also have the up-and-coming superintendent search, which will also have a community component. You know, where was, was interesting for you?" But I think also, Mr. Roskos and Ms. Menzer had also said, you know, "We should have a full, you know, outcry to the communities or anybody else whom is interested." I think we discussed that one or two meetings ago. So, we're really looking at those individuals who previously expressed interest, but also providing opportunity for other people who maybe haven't, anybody else, basically. So, I think that's something that Ms. Schatzman will put together in the proposal.
Yeah, I mean, not to jump ahead, but I think there's lots of ways we can engage the community, whether it's surveys, focus groups, town halls, or a formal committee. So there's kind of differing levels that we can consider. So I was gonna try to put things together in an organized way with a menu of options so we as a board could kind of weigh the pros and cons to different things. And they're not all mutually exclusive, so we can do a layered approach to.
Okay, and then also-
No, I literally had this conversation today at work, so.
And then also, do, what's the number of interested applicants for the superintendent's position?
Oh, I wanna say I have about seven, which actually brings up something else. Mr. Reedy, thank you for bringing this up. I actually wanted to bring this up to the board. And Mr. Murphy and Mr. Trelawny, your feedback would be greatly appreciated. I had an individual reach out to me only because I was the president of the board. And they asked what our next steps were going to be for the superintendent's search. And I said, "Well, stay tuned, December 19th." And they asked a question. More wanted to know if we as a board could discuss and figure out. I said, "Hey, everything's gonna occur on the 19th. I can't speak for the board. We've not had a discussion." There are many superintendents who are gainfully employed, as is in any profession. And these individuals may be interested in applying for the position. At the same time, really wants to understand what the board is looking for first before they make, 'cause they will give the professional courtesy to their boards of education that they're applying and looking for other positions. It was kind of asked, "How are we as a board going to publicly disclose really what we're looking for so that superintendents who have interest can apply knowing that they truly would align with the, the needs and wants of the community before they put themselves out there and potentially compromising a relationship with their existing board and/or community if they, you know, had interest in applying?" And I said, "That's a great question." And I didn't know how we wanted to handle that. So I'm throwing it out there as an area of consideration for our meeting on the 19th and/or discussion this evening. And I think that's fair. That's the hardest thing, you know, there's always, you might love the role that you're in, but you're looking for professional growth and development. And we are a large school. We'd be a step up for somebody who's an existing superintendent of a smaller district. At the same time, it doesn't mean they don't love their district. They're just looking for professional growth. So I don't know how to support that.
I think, obviously, people know the position is open, but we haven't formally launched the search. We haven't put out a position profile, those kind of things. So I think once we establish, and part of the consideration is which, are we gonna work with a firm? Which firm are we gonna work with? All of that. Generally, I think when we distribute the actual position profile, most districts that I've looked at have done sort of a brochure with, "These are the characteristics. Here is a very detailed position profile," as well as statistics about the size of the district and other relevant information. So I would imagine when we formally launch the search, both like on our website as well as, you know, going out and actively recruiting and then putting it out in certain trade publications, we would have all of that information before someone would actually submit a formal application. I don't know if that's okay with the rest of you, but that's what I've seen done.
My favorite show is Criminal Minds. And they sit in their office and they've got the pictures and the sticky notes and all that kinda stuff up.
Yarm between people.
Right. You know, I don't see why we couldn't start with something as simple as some sticky notes next week and at least start compiling some of the things that we may consider, you know, attributes that we're looking for.
So I heard Mr. Reedy volunteer for homework, so if I'm allowed to assign it, I would love it if you guys could think of the three to five essential attributes that you personally... Now, this, obviously, we're gonna involve the community. We're gonna involve the administrators. We're gonna involve the staff and hopefully the parents and maybe even some students too. I'd like to involve everyone in the community. But as a first pass, I would love for us to come with our three to five top desired attributes, what is essential in our next superintendent, and that way we could kind of align as a board.
And the due date is? No, I'm joking.
The 19th if possible.
Absolutely. I think that's-
Is that okay with all of you?
Yeah. I could probably list them right now.
Thanks so much.
I'm very excited that we're starting this process. I know we waited a little bit, but I think we're in the right spot right now to have these conversations. And Ms. Schatzman, I'm glad that you're a part of the board to kinda help us move forward in that endeavor. Okay. Let's see.
Not that I'm saying we criminally profile somebody. I didn't mean that. It was just an example.
You gave us a visual to help us connect with your idea, and I appreciate that.
Expect your attributes on the sticky notes.
So, the next one, I did send out an email for the communication preparation and just kind of, I wanted to ensure that everybody was up to speed with conversations we've had as an entire board throughout the year and ensure that Ms. Schatzman and Mr. Reedy were kind of up to speed on some of the ideas that we had. It is a, a large document, and it's merely a brain dump of things to consider. It's not to take action on all of them at once. So, is there anything that you would also like to have brought for the communication session? Mr. Murphy will actually, will be leading the portion with the debrief from the audit from Allerton Hill. And then it's just the ideas, the culmination of ideas for communication over the last 12 months. So, thoughts, questions? So we can be really actionable next time?
I'm really interested in hearing what Allerton Hill has, some of the suggestions and thoughts that they have. After reviewing that organization, I think from what I saw and communications with some of their other clients, I mean, I'm, I wanna hear from them before I make any additional thoughts.
And the representative from Allerton Hill is coming to the meeting?
Yes, she is.
Okay, awesome.
Thanks for organizing.
Sure.
Wonderful. And we talked about the community advisory committee. Okay. So we had an email last month, and I am humble enough to admit it, that in the email response to the community member, I had made mention that I would bring it up at the board meeting. And I, I do apologize. They've called it to my attention. I wanna make sure I make that right. So, in the end of October, prior to the OSBA meeting, obviously, we knew that the legislative platform that OSBA was voting on included a parental right to know, a large section, that failed to pass for a variety of reasons. Once again, I do not believe it was because the school boards in attendance who voted weren't in favor of parental right to know or parental rights. It was really syntactical. They couldn't agree on language. And when they couldn't agree on language, it failed. And I'm not exactly su-, OSBA was going to take it back up to see if they could refine the language, but it essentially will have to wait until November of next year to be voted on again in next year's legislative package. So, with that being said, there was still some questions about what does our district and our board, what's our perception of, you know, parental rights and then parental right to know? And there is a difference, kind of, but is there? And I, I didn't wanna respond on behalf of the board 'cause I didn't feel that I had enough information to respond. So I did reaffirm that we as a board did universally agree that we were in support of parental right to know and the legislative language. And I did vote in favor of it as disclosed. But what does it mean to us as a school board? What does it mean for us as a district? And outside of the policies, we have many policies in place that embody it. But, so I leave that open for discussion.
I attended the one legal session per your request. And one of the topics that came up was the fact that students also have rights that maybe the parents don't agree with, but they still have legal rights. And when it comes up to, as a parent, I, I wanna have the right to the information on, on my children and things like that. So, I mean, I'm supportive of parental rights. We just also have to take into consideration that the children also have rights because we don't wanna end up in this big legal battle that we're violating anybody's rights. So, I mean, that, that, that can be a, a touchy, touchy area simply because of the fact that the, and you know, a lot of times, if my son comes up and tells me, "Well, you don't have a right to..." And I'm like, "Oh, really? Well, we're gonna have a nice little chat now." So I, I don't, I don't know. How, how far can we go without violating the children's rights as well?
Can, did they say what the children's rights were? Because a minor under the age of eighteen doesn't have legal rights. So I, I'm confused by that.
Okay, this is the exact topic that came up. It was over the rights of LGBTQ students and talking about their pronouns and if a student did not want their parent to know their orientation. And the parents were saying, "Well, we have the right to know that. If they're doing something at the school, where does it stand like that?" And the attorney said that the, the children, if we do not, if we do not give the child their, their own rights, yes, even if they're under eighteen, they still do have some rights.
Where's the line drawn then? Because if a kid's smoking at school and says, "I don't want my parent to know," I mean, I understand that, but then where is the line drawn? Because it can literally be applied to anything. "I don't want my parent to know I'm having intercourse. I don't want my parent to know I'm smoking. I don't want my parent to know if I got an ass."
And that's where the problem came up. Because she said, "Right now, there's not a legal precedent set for that protection." And she said that they are expecting there to be a lot of legal confrontations in the near future. Because of this.
I'll personally say, I think this is a really long conversation that we probably need to have as a board. I have lots of opinions and I, I'm looking at the time. I'm not sure if we have enough time to get into all of them tonight. There's also, again, in front of the state school board, there's a vote tomorrow about going against federal regulations as it relates to Title IX. There is lots of stuff going on right now. And the interpretation of where we land, both legislatures and at the state school board level, there's a lot of things that are coming down the pike. And I, I don't think it's like a straightforward, we could just talk about it. And I think there's a lot of things to consider on both sides. So I would love if we can set some time as a board to talk about this. 'Cause I do think it's a much more detailed conversation than just, "We do or we don't." And we have to think about, you know, legal informa-, legal implications as well as safety concerns, as well as discrimination concerns and, you know, what that means. And I would love to believe that we live in a world where everyone could be safe at home if information was revealed. And I'm also a parent who wants to know what's going on with my daughter. And I know that not all of those things are always true. So I think it is a larger conversation and it's probably important for us to help the district have some clear guidance.
I just wanna let everyone know that when the question had come through and you guys were copying on the response, I was like, "Hey, let's, you know, see..." Mr. Murphy and I had a conversation. And we do have policies in place that we do follow. And a lot of those policies allow parents to, if they feel that there's events occurring in the school and/or curriculum, that they can opt out or have alternatives. That we do allow, you know, if a parent asks for curriculum or other things, we provide it. So there's, there's a lot of layers. And I think there's addition, as you said, Ms. Schatzman, additional layers. And that's why when the question came through, I was like, "Oh, my gosh." Thinking through all the places it could go. On the, on the flip side, one of the things that was discussed at OSBA that was highly contentious amongst a variety of school boards in discussion was parental right to know and parental rights and the language. Do they have the right to all children's information? Do they have the right to everything that we're doing as a district? Because when you, it gets into that language, if we give parents all of the right to know, how do we put guardrails in that it stays for just their child? And we protect the confidentiality of other children. And then also, the, the burden and the workload associated with it on the district for a variety of reporting and having the teachers and the secretaries and the administration be able to align with that. So I think that's why it was just so contentious. I think at the heart of it, we want our parents to be included in conversations. And we wanna honor that they're the first and best parent of their child or teacher of their child. And at the same time, honor and support public education. So, we can slate it, obviously, it won't be for December 19th. We've kinda set that agenda, maybe January?
Yeah, I think it's important. I mean, if you look at the statistics and, you know, depression rates and all of those kinds of things, I don't wanna have, you know, someone taking their own life or feeling depressed or doing all of these things because we have made some kind of off-the-cuff statements up here. So I wanna make sure that there is nothing, no decisions being made tonight and that we are going to fully have due diligence and make sure that we can provide, you know, factual and accurate information so that people are aware of what's going on in our district. 'Cause I do think, I hear that all the time, what's really going on in schools? Like, we should let people know.
And when it does come to mental health, a lot of times, through, whether it's HIPAA- And when it does come to mental health, a lot of times through, whether it's HIPAA regulations or parental rights to their children's medical records and stuff like that, I, I have not worked with children in the mental health capacity as much as adults. But they're, the ones that I have talked to, a lot of times, they don't want their parents to know for whatever reason. Whether they don't feel safe at home, whether it is something that they have talked with their parents and then their parents told them, well, there's something wrong with you. It's, it's a very. Yes, very slippery slope. It's very tough. When you deal with children who come from a home where there's domestic violence, that's also something that they don't want their parents to know that they're talking with, with somebody. It's a very difficult issue.
So, we'll make sure, Mr. Murphy, kind of put this as an item on a bookshelf to kind of start compiling information, policy, practice, procedure, and just be prepared when that conversation gets scheduled on an agenda to, to help us. To, I think the first place is to start, where are we now? And then we'll obviously work with legal to identify what are the constraints that we work within and take it from there. Does that sound like a good approach?
Yeah, and I think the community, we give them an opportunity to know when we're discussing it, and they can weigh in and attend. I don't think we want to hide it at all. I think we want to be really transparent about it.
That wasn't the intent or purpose tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make it sound like that. I'm just saying, I don't think we, I think we want to, you know, make it clear when we're putting it on the agenda and whatnot and give people reasonable time to get there and, you know, voice their opinion. I didn't mean to make it sound that way. I did not think that at all.
No, it was merely, I actually, I did not understand how to, I didn't want to speak for the board in the email. So, that's why I said we would defer it and open it to the floor and see where it went. So.
Yep.
Cut.
Sounds great.
Awesome. So, last, wanted to, for board discussion, throw a huge sincere thank you out to Mr. Murphy and all of the central office staff, as well as Stephanie and her team for putting together an amazing senior night out. And I know that it was extremely well received. I've had many people say how, how impressed they were and that they hope that we have more. And I just want to applaud your efforts, Mr. Murphy, as well as your team for an amazing evening. And as you said, the inaugural, and let's hope that there's more in the future. So, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
And I want to thank the community members that took the time to talk with us.
Yeah, a lot of good information. Okay. With that, is there anything else for board discussion? Okay. So, we will now move on to item 7A, Approval of Minutes of November 21st, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item 7A?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve 7A.
And do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Roskus. The floor is open for discussion. Mr. Cernello?
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll now move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Cernello, floor is yours.
Thank you. Now, all my numbers are messed up because we moved things around. So, this is eight?
This is 8A.
8A, Financial Report. This is the monthly financial report for the month ended November 2022. Through the month of November, we are 41.67% through the school year. So, hard to, hard to believe we're almost halfway there. To date, we have received 48.12% of our expected revenues for the year and 40.73% of our budgeted expenditures for the year. So, in the month of November, we saw revenues outpace our estimates by about $1 million and our expenditures come under, are expected by about $300,000. Our revenues will continue to slow until our first half property taxes are received in February 2023. Until then, our cash balances will decrease, just as we saw a $7.4 million decrease from October 31st to November 30th. Our lowest cash balance of the fiscal year is typically January. Overall, we are in line with where we expected to be through five months of the fiscal year. And we are in line, in alignment with the five-year forecast. And we will always continue to monitor our line items as if we won't see, if we see something we don't expect. So, we're always watching. 8B, Escrow Modification. This agenda item is a little bit outside of the box. It will yield between $30,000 to $35,000 back to the district's bond retirement account after fees are accounted for. This involves restructuring the escrow account for the partially refunded bond issue that was done in March of 2020.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 8B Escrow Modification?
Madam President, I'm, I'm, I motion to approve 8B Escrow Modifications.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second.
Thank you. Floor is open. Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. 8C, Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates. This is an annual requirement by the Lake County Auditor's Office, and it is attached for your review.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 8C, Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 8C, Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 8C, Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates.
Floor is open. Mr. Cernello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Purchase orders. These are instances where invoices were dated prior to the order being placed. And you will see, one is for re-ed. This is for the November tuition for some students. I believe this was because the purchase order that was in place was actually fully paid off. And when they created the new one, it was actually dated after the invoice arrived. The two walk-behind scrubbers, those were placed, and then they were not received and they were purchased with American Rescue Plan funds. And by the time those carryovers, carryover funds were received in October and encumbered in November, it resulted in an in-and-out purchase order. Then lastly was the staff development. That was also due to a federal grant. That was federally funded. So, just because of timing of receiving some of those federal dollars and getting purchase orders in places, in place, you could sometimes see some of these things. 7E, Grant Acceptance or Application Acceptance. This is from the Rebel Families. These are, these fund teacher mini-grants at South High School. 7F, This is to create a similar account, just like we have at the South High School. So, this would be at the North High School store. 7G, Student Activity Accounts. You'll see Rebel Families on here. This is just because they have to have a board-approved budget before they're allowed to expend any of those monies. And then 8H, We have two donations, one from Curtis Jackson, the second of Cleveland. He donated a 2005 Honda Civic to the NCI Willoughby Automotive Technology Program. And the second is the North Athletic Boosters donated $3,674 to the NHS to cover half of the cost for a new Sportscope Endzone Camera. So, that's pretty cool to have a Endzone Camera at North. And we'd like to thank both of them for their donations.
Okay, we'll now move on to item, well, Superintendent Resolutions, Item 9. We pick up where we left off. Okay, we're back on track.
All right, thank you, Madam President. The first item for consideration is item A, Project Lead the Way Curriculum Adoption. And since the opening of the School of Innovation, the district has expressed its commitment to STEM education, not only in the building of School of Innovation, but across the district as well. And for anyone listening that may not know, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And as a school district, we know that when students are able to experience content in these areas, they are more competitive academically and are better prepared to meet postgraduate opportunities. We have worked to expand class content, and our curriculum department has created rigorous selections that will benefit students the most when focusing on STEM courses. In addition to this outstanding work, the curriculum department was able to obtain two grants thus far to assist with the cost of this program. And this item identifies the classes that Willoughby Eastlake will adopt for a Project Lead the Way curriculum, which is STEM-based. Item B for your consideration is a Memorandum of Understanding with WEDA. This item addresses a gap that we recently discovered in our supplemental contract language with the Willoughby Eastlake Teachers Association Union and pertains specifically to the music department. The language in the amendment outlines a supplemental wage schedule for the choir and music directors when participating in public performances.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 9B, MoU with WEDA?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 9B, Memorandum of Understanding with WEDA.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you. Floor is open. Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item C for your consideration is a Classified Long-Term Substitute Pay Guideline for Paraprofessors and Secretaries. This item is regarding the substitute pay for paraprofessors and secretaries and is specific to someone filling in for these WESET union members. This states that if a person fills in as a substitute for 30 days or longer, we will pay them and allow them to accumulate sick days, just as we would a first-year employee in that position. This would mirror our language that we use for WEDA long-term subs as well and to try to help address the shortages that we're currently experiencing. So, trying to be a little more creative.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 9C, Classified Long-Term Substitute Pay Guideline for Paraprofessionals/Secretaries?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 9C, Classified Long-Term Substitute Pay Guideline for Paraprofessionals/Secretaries.
It's a long one. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second.
Thank you. The floor is open.
This is, this talks about if there's a break in service. How long of a break of service would they need? Say if they come in at the beginning of the school year, a teacher returns, say it's from, I don't know, whatever, absence of illness or something like that. Is there a certain amount of time that they have to have a break in service? Or is it, they're out this week, they come back?
Two weeks later?
So, this is for somebody filling in for 30 days or longer. But it does allow for a day and a half break in service if they need it to still earn the benefit. If it were more than a day and a half of a break in service and they wouldn't earn the benefit, they'd start back at, at zero on that break of service. So, give them a little wiggle room.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item D for your consideration, the Special Service Agreement. LearnWell is a national organization that helps support students that have been admitted into mental health facilities such as Windsor, Laurelwood, and Willoughby. While students are in these facilities, it's important that they continue to have their educational needs met. This company supplies tutors to these students while they are in the hospital, and the district provides the information and work that the tutors will complete with the child. This item is a renewal of our contract with them for the next year. Item E for your consideration is a Transportation Agreement Revision. This item is on the agenda each time we add new students to the list of recipients of funds for transportation. In certain circumstances, such as when a parent transports their child to a private school, parents are entitled to repayment for mileage. The, the payment amount is set by the state of Ohio. Item F for your consideration is the Overnight and/or Out-of-State Field Trip Request. Last month, we had a similar item to this from South High School. This, this time is for, from North High School. This time is for South High School. This item is for an overnight field trip that will be taken by students at South High School in their advanced Spanish and French classes. And in this case, the board is being asked to approve the trip and also a waiver for two school days that will be missed as a result of students traveling to Spain and France. Like the North trip, district money will not be used for this. And in this particular case, families will be responsible for payments for their child. In review on the proposal, the students attending the trip will be engaging in several valuable learning experiences, and I am confident it will be a positive impact on their education.
I don't know about everybody else, but when I saw this one on top of the Disney trip, I'm just, I'm so excited these students are now able to reengage in these lifelong memorable events, so.
Absolutely.
Very excited. Would love to hear how the trip went when they come back. Maybe have them come to the meeting in April and report out.
Be great.
Okay.
And then item G for your consideration is the Personnel Agenda. And this item includes this month's personnel changes as a result of things such as retirement, leave of absence, changes in pay, new hires or supplemental contracts. And these items require board approval. As a reminder, any person that is newly hired to the district before appearing on the agenda has been vetted and has undergone a background check.
Okay, we will now move on to item 10A. The meeting notification, the next regular slash organizational Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building at 35353 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake, Ohio. We will then move on to item 11A, Consent Calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve item 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Menzer. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second the motion to approve 11A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Wonderful. Any discussion? Okay, so, prior to taking a vote, I just wanted to take a second. This will be outside of the executive session. The last motion that I get to ask for approval for until or the 19th. The 19th is more like a, a general meeting. But I wanted to thank the community and the board and the administration for the opportunity to serve as the board president this year. It has been an amazing experience, and I'm super excited that I was able and afforded the opportunity. And I look forward to 2023 and the board's decision for the next president. With that, Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 12A, Other Business Adjournment to Executive Session?
Madam President, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment or employment of a public employee.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second that motion.
Wonderful. Just to inform the community, there'll be no action taken after this meeting. Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
We're in executive session as of 8:45 PM.
We will, we wish you all a wonderful evening and a happy, safe, and healthy holiday.
And, and one last thing, car raffle tickets are on sale. And what a great deal for anyone looking for a new car. And for a great cost.